Good afternoon, everybody. It is six thirty. We're going to get started. I'm going to call and order the meeting for Lincoln County Planning Commission. As a reminder to everyone, speak on the microphone. This is being recorded. And so tonight, we'll do, we'll mention the item that comes up. Staff will introduce the agenda, present the summary of the staff report. The applicant. The applicant will be asked to explain their proposal. And answer a question from the planning and zoning members. We'll open the floor to public comment, first to people in support of the application, and then we'll ask for the people in opposition. When you step up to the podium, please leave your name, your address, and be very clear into the microphone. And please direct all comments to, to the committee up here. No, no side, no, no side comments. Each speaker has a speak, chance to speak in their comments. Try to keep it less than five minutes. As you can see, we're very busy tonight. So please try to keep everything short and, and straight, to the point. And I was asking, you only present new, new information for us. Lastly, decisions, a conditional use permit may be appealed to the county board of commissioners by submitting a letter to the county planning zoning within five business days. All right, with that. We'll do a roll call, please. Here.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Pashby? Commissioner Pashby? Commissioner Poppins?
Here.
Commissioner John Lane?
Here. All right, thank you very much. And as you guys see, we're, we're zooming some commissioners in. So again, that's another, another challenge. I ask everybody to speak clearly. Approval of the agenda. Everyone had a chance to go over it this week and any?
We need a motion for the minutes first.
What was that? Oh, I got so excited about the agenda. All right, approval of the minutes. Any discussion or changes? Toby, any changes? All right, I'll, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and second. No discussion. I'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Ensted?
Hi.
Commissioner Hogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Aye.
Commissioner John Lane?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, now we can do the agenda.
Commissioner Pashby?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make.
Yes, yes, go ahead. Commissioner Hogan, did, did you have a comment?
Nope, I, I was just going to make the, uh, motion to approve the agenda.
All right, uh, is there any changes to the agenda, Toby?
Mr. Chairman, there is a change to the agenda this evening. Uh, item number thirteen, legal counsel for the applicant has requested that the item be removed from the agenda this evening. The application has not been withdrawn, but they want it withdrawn from consideration for this evening. So again, uh, staff would request you approve the agenda with the removal of item number thirteen.
Thank you, Toby. Commissioner Hogan, do you want to do your, uh?
Sure. I will, um, Mr. Commissioner, I will request to approve the agenda with the removal of item number thirteen.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. After no discussion, uh, we'll take roll call.
Commissioner Ensted?
Hi.
Commissioner Hogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Aye.
Commissioner John Lane?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, at this time, we'll do public input for non-agenda items. So if anybody from the public would like to come up and, and speak to us about anything that's not on the agenda, uh, please feel free right now. Okay, uh, seeing none? Any old business? No, I don't think so. All right, we'll move on to the public hearings. Toby, would you like to get started, number one?
Uh, sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this first item is an application to rezone or change of zone approximately 5.23 acres uh, from the A1 agricultural district to the RR rural residential district. Uh, the applicant owner for this property is Hetloo Farms LLC. Uh, per the staff report, there was not a concept plan submitted with this application. However, staff has discussed with the applicant, uh, some intended or concepts for the property. Uh, first being that the, the applicant also owns a property directly to the east where they reside in a single-family dwelling. Uh, they're proposing to expand or expand a portion of that property to the east to include some trees that are on the subject property. And then the second part of the concept would be is, uh, for development of one single-family dwelling on the property. Um, staff has reviewed the application and does feel that it is in conformance with your comprehensive plan and with the zoning regulations. Uh, staff does recommend approval of this application. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Toby. Thank you, Toby. Anybody have any questions?
Excuse me, just a second, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Gary.
Okay, I'm on board.
Okay, um. All right, if there's no question for staff, I'll ask the applicant to come up and give us a brief description of, of their application.
Hello, I'm Robert Coomer. My address is twenty-nine oh-one West Ninety-Fifth Street, Sioux Falls. And I am representing Hetloo Farms as the owner of Hetloo was not able to attend tonight. I think Toby summed it up. Basically, he wants to change the zoning from ag to rural residential so that a single-family home can be constructed on it without any concern of livestock being there in the future since it's residential surrounding it. Any other questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Robert? No, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask anybody to come up and speak in, in favor of the application. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask anybody who wants to speak in opposition of the application. All right, seeing none, I will close the floor to comment. And I'll ask for a motion from the commissioners.
Oh, move, Pashby?
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion amongst the commissioners? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ensted?
Hi.
Commissioner Hogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Epstein.
Commissioner John Lane?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck. And, uh, Toby, number two, please.
Uh, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, item number two is an application to change the zone of approximately eleven point nine acres uh, from the A1 agricultural district to the RR rural residential district. Uh, the applicant is, um, Richard Peters. Uh, he is the owner of the subject property. Uh, Mr. Peters also owns a property directly to the north, um, that's owned rural residential, and to the south, it's owned rural residential. Uh, the applicant did submit a concept plan with the application. Uh, the intent is to subdivide the property for single-family residential development. As you can see, the proposal would incorporate, uh, the property to the south and then this subject property. Uh, subject property does have, uh, Mr. Peters' residence and some outbuildings on it. The portion that would be, uh, developed would be the portion just south of where the southernmost, um, accessory structure is. Uh, so again, the concept would be to change the zone to allow, uh, development approximately, uh, twelve lots. Uh, per the staff report, uh, staff did review the application. Uh, staff does find that the application is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and with the zoning, uh, ordinance. Uh, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any questions for staff? All right, hearing none, I'll ask the applicant to come up and give us a brief description of the proposal.
Uh, Mr. Peters is participating by Zoom, so we'll, we'll get him lined up right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm here. I've never done a Zoom call before. I'm, can you hear me? I'm assuming I'm on?
We can hear you. You're doing great, thank you. Uh, can you give your name and address for the record?
Yes, this is Richard Peters. My address is two-seven-two-two-eight South Dakota Highway seventeen, T., South Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Can you give a brief description of the application?
Um, yeah, uh, I think Toby, uh, you know, pretty much called it out. Our, our, uh, plan was to develop the acres that we currently own to the south. And if we're able to rezone, um, the current acres that we're talking about, um, it would gain a couple additional lots on that to the south. Uh, that's the, that's the main reason for wanting to do this.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, you have any questions for Mr. Peters? All right, hearing none, I will ask anybody in favor of the applicant to come up and speak. Okay, seeing no one, um, I ask anybody to come in opposition of the application. All right, with that, we will close the floor to public comment. And I'll ask a motion from the commissioners, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Will you approve, Pashby?
I'll second Hogan.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion amongst the, the commissioners? Okay, um, hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ensted?
Hi.
Commissioner Hogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Epstein.
Commissioner John Lane?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peters. Good luck with your, with your, uh, project.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Toby, will you speak on number three, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so this is an application to change the zone of approximately twenty acres uh, from the I-one light industrial district to the I-two general industrial district. Uh, subject property, um, is currently undeveloped, uh, and is vacant. Um, the applicant for this is CBC Land LLC, or Paul Garbers. Um, the, the, uh, concept planned, uh, was not submitted with the application other than some general vicinity of where this area is. This has since been revised to include, I believe it would go this way, uh, here. Staff has met, though, with, uh, the party that would be purchasing the subject property. Concept that they have is, is a livestock processing facility. Um, what I would say, though, at the outset of this is that this is the first step of that process. Uh, so this is a change of zone application. Again, the property is currently zoned I-one light industrial. It has been rezoned that, uh, in conjunction with, when the property was rezoned for the livestock, uh, auto, or for livestock sales to the south. Um, but in saying that, uh, in each zone or rezone change is that, uh, we do receive concepts that don't always come to fruition, uh, but for the board's knowledge that with this change of zone that there would be two permissive uses, uh, four permitted special uses, and then thirteen-plus conditional uses. Um, so whenever we're looking at a rezone, we don't necessarily understand that the concept's going to come to fruition, but we do need to take into account that this, uh, potential property could be utilized for any of those types of uses in the future. Uh, so per the staff report, staff has reviewed the application. Uh, staff, uh, staff's opinion that the application is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance for Lincoln County. And so staff does recommend approval of this change of zone. Uh, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you very much, Toby. Commissioners, you have any questions for staff?
Yeah, Toby, this is, um, Wendy. Can I, just a question. You said that obviously some of the concepts may or may not come to fruition, um. So if it becomes a livestock processing facility, obviously, we're going to have to go through the whole approval of them and we'll, we'll get the neighbors to have the chance to come in and speak and all that because I, uh, you know, I, I would want them to have the say, you know, be able to come in and, and talk to us and, and, you know, say if they approve or disapprove, you know. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct, Commissioner. So really, this is just the outset phase of is this appropriate land use? But at some stage, there would be a conditional use permit. And as you're aware, that's where typically the board puts conditions or requirements or screening and those different types of things on the application.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was the case here.
Thank you. Any other additional questions for staff? Okay, I will ask anyone in the audience or Zoom would like to speak on, uh, in favor of the applicant. Come to the podium, please.
It's, the app, the applicant is here in attendance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that one. I get so excited about so many things. All right, yes, okay. Would you please come and give us a brief proposal of the, of your application?
Paul Garbers, ten-sixteen Angel Lane in Canton, South Dakota. As you can see, what's in blue, it is just the northeast corner of that, approximately twenty acres. It is light industrial. Now it needs to go to heavy industrial or general industrial. What is proposed to go there is a locker plant similar, they would do up to a hundred and twenty head a day. It is going to be offered for producer-owned. It's not an outside person coming in. It's, anybody in this room can buy stock. If you've got animals, if you've got livestock, you'll have first dibs on it. Uh, the building is, I've heard some things, the building is not a processing plant. It's a locker plant. It's a fourteen thousand square foot building. It would fit on approximately five acres. The rest is parking lot, trucks getting in and out.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul. Any questions for Paul from commissioners?
Paul, is this a, uh, I mean, when you say locker plant, maybe something that would be like federally inspected that would allow producers to sell, uh, their product?
That is what it, it is. It's for the local people to come there and they will also, if everybody that's got livestock realizes that if you wanted a livestock to butcher at a locker plant right now, you're probably talking to a year to two years out. They will also process your, your beef if you wanted to mark. It's, it's, the concept is to engage the public, to work there, to bring the livestock there so you're not depending on the top four to tell you what you're going to get for your animals.
All right, thank you. Any, any additional questions for Paul? Yep, um, so we'll allow you to address for, for the public input on that one. So right now, uh, no other questions by commissioners. We'll, uh, ask the, anyone in favor of the application to come up and speak, please.
Hello, I'm Wendy Sweeter, four-seven-one-five-zero-two-hundred-and-eighty-third Street Worthing, um, Lynn Township clerk.
Carla Wickers, uh, four-seven-five-seven-five-two-hundred-and-seventy-ninth Street, Lynn Township supervisor.
That Ken Sweeter here for, uh, representing Lynn Township.
Um, our board, uh, our supervisor board has met with Paul Garbers and are in support of the rezone as well as the company that is proposing the locker plant. We had concerns about the road, but we have talked to them and they said that they would maintain the road, four-hundred-and-seventy-first Avenue during the construction phase, and have come to an agreement with us, um, to maintain the road after that for two years with the review process after that. And have talked to them about having their traffic come off of Highway eighteen to access the facility where no one lives on that mile of road. So, anything else you want to add? That's all from us.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of the application? Okay. Seeing none, uh, invite anybody up and speak in opposition of the application.
My name is Danny Dyke. I live at four-seven-zero-three-eight-two-hundred-and-eighty-first Street Worthing. And, uh, can I ask the question that I was wanting to ask earlier? He, uh, is there going to be like a lagoon? Because I know you didn't mention anything about that. So I guess I'd like to know more about said lagoon that, uh, I heard it was going to be there, I guess, so.
Okay.
Um, and then also, now, I, I'm very concerned about smells and everything else with, uh, coming along with this. And, uh, you know, the footprint that was given, um, you know, once that's in the door, whether that gets bigger or not, is a big concern for me as well, so. That's what I have to say, I guess.
Thank you, Danny. Paul, could you answer that question quick?
Yes, I'm sorry, there will be a lagoon. There has to be because naturally you don't have, uh, leach field that you can put it up there. The, the lagoon will be three and a half acre lagoon. It will have a DAF unit. Now, I'm not going to say I'm the expert on a DAF unit. But what I understand is the DAF unit is what breaks down the washing of whatever, so it speeds up the process of breaking things down. Now, um, the lagoon would hold up to eight point four million gallons of water. It only needs six and a half to seven, so it is getting, there, it will be aerated, so it, this lagoon will have more specs on it because EPA or whoever is going to have a lot more specs, the things that this has got to get done. According to, and I'm not talking down the sail barn, so don't take that I am, but the, the lagoon on the sail barn is probably three times as big as this is going to be. The lagoon at the city of Worthing is way bigger than this lagoon's going to be. Plus, it's got all this, this DAF unit that's going to keep it concealed.
Paul, do you know where the engineers, um, might be placing the lagoon in relation to the property on display here?
I'm not going to say I know that for sure, but in the.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to interrupt a little bit here, too. I think the, uh, the purpose is to rezone it to industrial. You know, we're not to the point yet where we're talking about lagoons or buildings or is, is, is simple rezoning. You know, what might or might not happen in the future, that'll be, that'll be a different meeting.
I'm just, I mean, since I'm up here, people, I, I have a store three-quarters of a mile away from there. Most of you know that. I wouldn't be in favor of something that's not good for the public. They came to me. I've had many a meeting, many a meetings with these people. If, it's just like the sail barn. The sail barn's been good for people. You just need to give it a chance. But by all means, stop out and see me, call me, and I will more than happy to sit down with whoever.
Thank you, Paul. Would anybody else like to speak, uh, in opposition of the application?
I live a half mile away from the, the proposed location, so I know this is just.
Please say your name and address.
Dan Giken, two-eight-zero-nine-eight-four-hundred-seventieth Avenue Worthing, so.
Thank you.
Um, I know this is just for rezoning purposes, so I know the township, uh, these are new committee members I've never seen before. So I know when this was proposed for the methane plant a few years back, the current, uh, township, uh, commissioner at the time had major concerns about any heavy traffic. The road, uh, going into there doesn't have the base for it. Uh, he could prove that. I don't know what has changed since then, so if we're going to rezone this into heavy, you know, commercial use, what kind of traffic are you talking? The township's already, I knows. It's always an issue for money anyway, at least when it comes time that we need our roads plowed out there. So I can't imagine if they're going to take care of it for two years. You know, if there's no road base now, I'm in construction. I know what kind of mess and what kind of price you're talking. So those are the first concerns I have. And obviously, if this gets approved, I'm sure all of the neighbors will be back because, you know, I, I know Paul, I do a lot of business at his place, but I've got a very nice piece of property along with the rest of us that are very close. And I know what happens being in the, the business when this gets rezoned. It opens a whole bunch of doors to other things. So this may start as a small project, but I'm sure it will grow, so.
Thank you.
So that, my question would be on the road to start with.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion in opposition?
Brad DeZucca, five-oh-one West Beck Street, Mayor of Worthing. A couple of things to keep in mind. One, you're three miles within city limits of Worthing, and we haven't heard anything about this. Typically, as a commission, I would expect that you'd reach out to our planning and zoning to talk to them about future plans and where we expect to grow. Um, so I was a little disappointed about that. Second, uh, the city commission. We found out about this basically last week early. So little heads up would have been nice. I'm a little concerned about going to, uh, the next step up to see what that would impact for our growth, especially considering we're thinking about housing on that south end. So keep that in mind, please.
Thank you.
Amber Wallace, two-thirteen North Chrisin Worthing. I guess I think it's kind of insulting that you say that this is the first step, that we don't really have to say our opinions because nothing's written in stone. So I mean, I guess I don't understand that part of it. The concern that I have is the employees that he plans on bringing in, from what I understand, was about fifty employees. And in my experience with the job that I do, that, um, they're not always, there are a lot of employees that work at locker plants that have criminal histories and our crime rate in Worthing is already going up. What is the plan to do that without a full-time cop? What are, what are the plans to protect Worthing that's three miles away? And again, with the whole lagoon thing, we already have problems with smells in Worthing. Everybody who was in Worthing last week can attest to that. The second it was nice out, it was not fun to be outside. So we're going to add to that problem. And then again, for you guys to say, well, don't worry about this. This is just a zoning thing. This is the first step to stop this, and that's why we're all here. So my question is, what are you guys going to do to protect us from the employees, from the traffic, from all those things?
I want an answer to that too. Can I have an answer to that?
Excuse me ma'am, come step up and we'll discuss it.
That wasn't, that wasn't a rhetorical question. I kind of, I would like an answer what the plan is for that.
So when we, when it goes to conditional use permit, there'll be conditions and everything put on that if it gets rezoned tonight?
Okay, so again, you don't care about what's happening. You're just yeah, let's rezone it first and then, and then, and then your concerns will be addressed. Is that what you're saying?
Thank you. Who, next?
Shane Cawthorn, 103 North Sun Street. So I'm worried about the smells. I have a four-year-old daughter and a two-year-old kid. And, you know, the smells last week were bad. And then, you know, how about all the new development that's going to be going on this summer in the south end? And, you know, that's going to deteriorate the people that want to move there, you know? This is just bad for the community altogether.
Thank you.
Gary Oldencamp, 47181-281st Street. I live three quarters of a mile from the proposed site. And I know what happens in a meatpacking plant. And I am not in favor of it because of the, of the people that come and work in a place like that. And also along with the lagoon and the smell. So I'm in favor. I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you, Gary.
Ally Pick, 704 West Beck Street. I know that nothing is being decided now and this is just kind of a first step to things. And I am also very passionate about, about keeping my community safe and small. And there have been concerns stated already about smells and things like that. So I just wanted to speak for our small corner of Worthing and say that we are also not in favor of the potential that this could be.
Alexis Abbott, 706 West Beck Worthing. I've lived there for four and a half years. Family has a business there for 27 years. And we are not in support of that. Again, the smell, you know, we want to grow the community. This is not going to benefit growing the community at all. It's very concerning. Again, crime, smell, all of that. We don't want it.
Thank you. All right. Is there any new information that you can share with, for comments, please?
Nick Abis, 46905-281st Street in Lennox. I know when they talked about the roads, they recommended they would come off of 18 to the north and they would maintain that. But with the exit just a mile to the north, coming down 471st to the south, is there any plan? If trucks start coming down that, or they'll maintain that, or if they come the mile west, you know, down 281st Street? Because, I mean, if it's 120 head a day, you know, up to 600 head a week. And there's a lot of trucks going up and down the road, like the other commenter said. So are they just responsible just for what they tear up? Or is there anything to the north, to the west, or, you know, anything for crossing over the bridge? I know they had talked about taking that bridge out, so. I mean, I just think all the roads in the area aren't set up for the heavy industry right now.
Thank you. I agree. Roads are always a concern for something like this. Any additional people like to speak?
Ryan Oswald, my address is 28126-472nd Avenue. I would be directly one mile east of the proposed location. Being a firefighter on Worthing, this is my opinion strictly, not in regards to fire department. But for heavy industrial, our equipment is stressed already. We don't have the equipment to tend to heavy industrial as of right now. So, I mean, take that into account for future decisions. Mad respect for Paul, great business guy. Just as, from a fire department standpoint, I don't think we're ready as of right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
My name is Katrina Perryon. I live at 107 North Sun Street in Worthing. I've had my home there for just about 13 years. And like basically everybody else, I just share concerns over noxious fumes and what kind of traffic this is going to bring into our community. It's, a lot of us are very concerned about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. All right. Everyone's had their moment. Well, no one else. We'll close the floor to public comment. And I'll ask for a motion from the commissioners.
I would move to accept the zoning change.
Do we have a second so we can have a discussion?
I will, I will second. Pashby.
Thank you, Commissioner Pashby. All right, commissioners, discussion.
I guess I would say that the plan probably deserves the light of day. I understand everybody's concerns that are here this evening. I think there's a lot of other, there are positives that can come of this as well. So I guess let the process air itself out and let, give Paul a chance to present his engineering that he's had, done, or the company that'll be working on this, and maybe get some more information to address your concerns and move forward.
Maybe we will build it by your house.
Excuse me, excuse me, everyone. I'll, I'll ask you to leave if there's more outbursts, okay? Thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion? Any comments? I'll, I'll say my comments are always, my first two are always the road and emergency personnel. That's a big strain on our county as far as being able to serve areas, close, local, all that stuff. So those are always two big concerns of mine. Any other discussions, commissioners? Okay, if not, I'll ask for a roll call. Oh, Ms. Hogan?
Actually, this is Hogan. Yes. I would actually agree with that. Because of the roads, I, you know, living where I live in, in Lincoln County, and roads are, seem to be an issue. And getting broken up and hard to get it, get them taken care of. So roads are, are a big, big problem and, and the emergency service. And when the gentleman spoke from the fire department, that's, that's going to be a real issue. There's a problem out there. But again, we, we do maybe need to let this work its way through and, and at least see the plans and see what the engineers have to say. See if there is some way to work through it all and have the both to both worlds here.
Thank you, Commissioner Hogan. All right. We've done public in, in comment already. All right. With that, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ensted?
Nay.
Commissioner Hogan?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Edstain.
Commissioner Jonglin?
I'll vote aye to let it see our place through.
Motion passes.
All right. Next, Toby.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So this next application is a conditional use permit to allow warehousing to exceed 20,000 square feet on the premises. The applicant owner is Red Roof Rentals, specifically Jeff Haas is representative for that, for this application. The proposal is, there's an existing structure on the property. The proposal is to add a new building of 8,640 square feet onto the property. The, the application and the conditions that are recommended would require that to be for just warehousing on the property. This was the concept plan that was submitted with the application. Again, this would be for the construction of one new 8,640 square foot building to be utilized for warehousing. Per the staff report, staff did review the application and determined that it is in conformance with the zoning regulations for Lincoln County and does recommend approval with conditions that are outlined in the staff report. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any question for staff? Did I hear Gary or?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I asked the applicant to come forward and speak on, about the application.
Good evening. Jeff Haas, 3256 South Grace Avenue, Sioux Falls. And the proposal is for 192 by 45-foot structure with 16-foot sidewalls, eight individual storage facilities. Pretty much like you explained.
Sure. Thank you, Jeff. Is there any questions by commissioners? Please, thank you. All right. I would ask anybody that speak in favor of the application to come forward. Okay, seeing none. I'll ask anybody in opposition to come forward, please. All right, seeing none, I will close the floor to public input, and I'll ask for a motion from the commission.
I'll make the motion to approve with the findings and conditions.
Thank you, Colin.
Second.
I'll second. This is Hogan.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. We'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ensted?
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Edstain.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Good luck, Jeff. All right, Mr. Brown.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this next application is a conditional use permit to transfer three building eligibilities. The subject property did go through an application for a change of zone, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners earlier this month. So this petition would be, there's three remaining billing eligibilities on the portion that's shown on the screen. They would be transferred to the property owners, property owners, or the property, the property owner also owns directly to the east. And so per the staff analysis, staff does feel that this application is in conformance with the zoning regulations and does recommend approval, subject to the conditions that were listed in the staff report. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'll invite the applicant to come forward and speak on, speak about what you're thinking about doing.
Andrew Har, 409 South Red Willow Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, representing the Carolyn Porter Trust. As Toby indicated, they wanted to move three eligibilities from the southwest quarter onto the adjoining roughly 80 acres to the west. And that's exactly what it is.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions for Andrew? Okay, I see no questions from commissioners. I'll ask anybody to come up and speak in favor of the application. All right. I'll ask anybody to come forward and speak in opposition of the application. All right. With no one coming forward, I'll close the floor to public comment. I'll ask for a motion from the commissioners.
Move to approve with findings and conditions. Pashby.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second. Ensted.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion amongst the commissioners? All right. Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ensted?
Nay.
Commissioner Hogan?
Nay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Edstain.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Okay, Mr. Brown, will you speak on the next one, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So this next application is a conditional use permit to allow motor vehicle sales displays and service on the subject property. This property has an existing structure built on it. What the proposal or the applicant is requesting is to utilize Suite 1, which is approximately 2,400 square feet. Per the application, it would primarily just be motor vehicle sales. The application stated there would be no bodywork on site. We have allowed other units within this structure for the similar type of use. This is the concept plan or site plan that was submitted with the application. As you can see, the applicant will be utilizing Suite 1 and per the, per the site plan or concept plan that identified enough parking spaces to meet the requirements of the ordinance. Staff has reviewed the application and the criteria for approval and has determined that the application does meet the criteria. Staff does recommend approval of the application, subject to the conditions as recommended in the staff report. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right, hearing none, I'll ask the applicant to come forward and discuss what you, what you'd like to do.
Good evening. James Carter, 27058 Sunset Boulevard, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And basically what we're asking is to rezone this so we could get a South Dakota auto dealer's license. The intent is to keep two to three retailable cars at any given time. Nothing that needs any major work or any bodywork or anything like that. I do have 15 years' experience in the auto industry, so I'm familiar with the laws of I do have 15 years' experience in the auto industry, so I'm familiar with the laws of, of all of that end of it. I've talked to Mr. Ron Rizavi with the State of South Dakota on that end of it and had pretty extensive talks with him. He thought it sounded like an all right deal, just have to get the, the rezoning first.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, you have any questions for James?
Are you, are you a current resident in South Dakota or in the area?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep, I reside in Sioux Falls and Lincoln County.
Okay, so you just, okay.
That's my, yeah, that's the shop space, yep.
Okay, I understand, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask anybody to speak in favor of the applicant, come forward. All right, anybody in opposition of the application? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the floor to public comment and I ask for a motion from the commission.
This is Hogan, I'll make a motion to approve with the findings and conditions.
Second, Enstead.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? My, my only thing, James, is I, we see from the pictures, there's other cars parked out there, they're in disrepair, you know, and, and your conditions don't allow that, so I just remind you of that, please.
Yeah, yep, none of those cars in the picture that are in disrepair are any of our vehicles.
Right, yep.
So, yep, everything we have would be drivable.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, I, I would assume your motion and a second were with the recommended findings?
Yes.
Yes, I said with findings and conditions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not hear that part.
That's okay.
With, any other further discussion, commissioners? Okay, with that, we'll call roll call, please.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yay.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Epstein.
Commissioner John Lane?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Good luck, Mr. Carter. I think we'll do one more, then maybe we'll take, take a break. Mr. Brown, will you talk on number seven, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so item number seven is a conditional use permit application to allow contractor shops and storage yards. Subject property is already, has a building constructed on it. As you can see, it's owned I-1 Light Industrial. When, when this was originally permitted, it was permitted as a warehouse to exceed 10,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet in this case. And subsequent to find out in discussions with the owner is that primarily is being utilized or the intent of it is to be utilized for contractor shops. And so this application is proposing not any additional construction on the property. As far as new, there's going to be some build out of some of the, some of the units in the facility, but essentially, it's essentially just reclassifying how the uses are on the property. Staff has reviewed the application and does feel that it is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. And so staff does recommend approval of the application with the conditions that were identified in the staff report. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time. The applicant on this application is Chad Javers Construction. Again, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Toby, did I hear you, this is Hogan, I'm sorry, did I hear you say that he had originally got the permit to do 20,000 square feet, like, storage? And now he's having contractors shops?
Well, yeah, so that was prior to, to our time here at the county, but essentially it was approved as warehousing. In my understanding and talking to the applicant, it was never really intended to be utilized for warehousing, it was always intended to be utilized as a contractor shop. So this is just bringing it in in conformance with what the intent to use of the property is.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Toby, is, is this building currently built the way this floor plan lays out? You, you said no construction, correct?
I, I think there's a few units that, that haven't been built out yet, but yes, that, that is the way that the building is constructed, yes.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask the applicant to come forward and speak on the application.
Chad Javers, 6900 Jovan Circle, Sioux Falls. As Toby mentioned, when we originally built the building, the conditional use permit was set up as it being warehousing. It's, the south half of the building's always been contractor shops. We're going to build out the north half to match the south half of shops. It's pretty much it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Javers. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Javers? No? Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask anybody in support of the application, come forward and give your name. Okay, seeing none, I will ask anybody in opposition of the application to come forward. All right, seeing none, I will close the floor to comment and I'll ask for a motion from the commissioners.
Moved to approve with the conditions and findings, Pashby?
I'll second that. Johnson.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. All right, commissioners, any discussion on the application? Okay, hearing none, with that, I'll call for roll call, please.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yay.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Epstein.
Commissioner John Lane?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, good luck, Mr. Javers. All right, commissioners, how are you feeling? Is this a good spot to take a quick break? Are you guys good, you want to keep going through?
Keep going.
Yeah, I would say just drive on and get it done.
What was that called?
Keep going and get it done.
All right, let's get her done, we're going to power through. All right, Mr. Eight, number eight, Mr. Brown.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is an application for a conditional use permit to, to allow light manufacturing on the subject property. The applicant is Brock DeReese for this application. The proposal is to construct, that's not coming up for some reason. There we go. The, the application is to construct an approximately 4,250 square foot building and there will be proposed plans for an expansion of that building, but it would, again, take up part of the property, there would be some outside storage on the property. And again, this would be utilized for light manufacturing. This is just south of the, the newly developed site that was the insurance auto auction. Staff has reviewed the application and been in discussions with the applicant. It's staff's opinion that the application is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. Staff does recommend approval of this application, subject to the conditions of the staff report. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, any questions for, for staff? Hearing none, okay, thank you. I'll ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about what you're proposing.
All right, I'm Brock DeReese and my address is 210 South Canterbury Circle in North Sioux City, South Dakota. And our business is, me and my partner, Paul's business is natural stone manufacturers. And I guess we need to, or we're purchasing this site to, I guess, need it to be re-zoned from, is it light industrial to light manufacturing so that we can put up a thin veneer stone cutting facility? So full veneer stone comes from a quarry and then we have state-of-the-art saws we're going to put in our, I guess, our building that have their own water system and, and it's, they're really quiet and then we also need some outdoor storage for our product, finished product and then products we get off trucks. Yeah. I guess any questions, that's pretty much, we're just going to be cutting, cutting full veneer stone from a quarry down to thin veneer stone that goes on houses or commercial buildings, stuff like that. So, any questions, I'll be happy to answer that you guys may have.
So are you going to have any sales on site or is that just a manufacturing?
No, we're, we're planning to have a showroom in, in Sioux Falls, so there's going to be minimal, I mean, one guy can run the saw and cut about 500 to 1,000 square foot a day and then it goes on pallets and then a truck comes in and takes it too.
So you won't have a warehouse at that site for additional traffic coming and going out of there?
No. So.
Commissioners, anyone else have any questions for, for applicant? Brock, you said you have water usage and all that for your saws and all that, have you worked through that with, I'm assuming roll water and then where does?
See, it's going to have a well and then it's going to have a septic system for that lot, or for that property.
Okay.
So we're going to have to put a well in and do all that stuff with the state and have a certified well person put the well in, drill the well, so. Yes, I, I mean, it doesn't have real water, no, so.
Okay, I'm just curious about capacity and.
Is there any specific type of containment you have to have for, you know, whether it's the runoff or the residuals, if there's, is there any chemicals used to cut this stone with?
No, no, basically it's a state-of-the-art Parks Industry saw that has its own self-contained water system, so it has like a, it, as you're cutting the stone, it, I mean, it's a lot of heats made within the saw, so it has its own water system. And then everything, dust, particles, you know, excess things are, go through the floor and then go into this like bag system that we have to take out like once a week, but it kind of makes like a, think like wet dust, you know, or wet, really fine, I mean, it puts it in a bag and then we get rid of it, so there's nothing really harmful to the environment or anything like that. Dust, dust-wise or anything like that, noise-wise or anything, no. So there's n, really none, no, so.
I apologize, I got off track again, we're doing a, a rezone, not conditional permit, so whatever you're doing in there, we'll address later with conditional permit.
Yep.
So, yes, commissioners, any additional questions? All right, thank you, Brock. All right, at this time, I would ask anyone in favor of the application to come forward. All right, seeing none, I'll ask anybody in opposition of the application to come forward. All right, with that, I'll close the floor to public comment and I'll ask for a motion from the commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve with the findings and conditions.
Second, Johnson.
All right, we had a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? All right, hearing no discussion, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Enstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby? Commissioner Pashby? Commissioner Poppins?
Aye.
Commissioner John Lane?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck, Brock. All right, agenda, item number nine, Mr. Brown.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is an application for a conditional use permit to allow an agriculture-related operation. Specifically, this would be seed sales. This application would involve the plating of property to allow for the development of a building of approximately 13,880 square feet and associated bins with it. The applicant for this is David Cooper and, as you can see there, this was the site plan or concept plan that was submitted with the application that would show the, the structure that would be built on the property and utilized for the seed sales. Staff did review the application and staff's determination that the application is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, staff does recommend approval of this application contingent or subject to the conditions as outlined in the staff report. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I will ask anyone in favor of the application to come forward and speak. Oh, oh, I got excited again. My bad. Is the applicant here and would they like to speak on their proposal?
Hello, I'm David Cooper, 28, 137, 464th Avenue of Lennox, South Dakota. I guess, pretty much has been told, I guess by Toby here, is trying to build a facility to replace a couple other facilities that have retired. One in Lincoln County, the Craig Sterns, and another one is Lloyd Poppins out of Turner County by T, South Dakota. So, we picked this site to kind of be central location of the previous owners of the pioneer businesses, so. Facility for the state highway to, you know, alleviate any low limit factors that, you know, seed is brought into. And it's, would be the convenience for kind of a 15-mile radius of north-southeast, east-west for us, so. And any questions, be, be happy to answer some.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? All right, have you spoke with the county highway superintendent or anything as far as traffic or driveway or, or anything like that?
We have just put in, in application with the DTN or TT, South Dakota, for them to look at, you know, whether the requirements that they would have for a driveway, so. Other than that, it's all contingent yet to whether planning and zoning approves, then we will, you know, further into this project, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Hearing none, thank you. All right, is there anyone in attendance or zoomed that I'd like to speak in favor of the application? All right, is there anyone in attendance or zoomed that'd like to speak in favor of the application?
Jamie Nielsen, representing Nielsen Construction, 1109 South Tabor Avenue in Sioux Falls. So just been working with Dave on this project and it's, we're excited to help him and support him, give him what he needs. We've got this project subcontracted with a bunch of the main contractors, obviously out of Sioux Falls, like Reeves and Sorlene, so obviously from our perspective, we'll make sure that everything's done to code, to specifications with the electrical, HVC, plumbing, et cetera. So, just letting you know, we're here to support you and support Dave and any questions that you might have, we're happy to help answer those.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yep.
All right, anybody else in favor of the application? Seeing none, I will ask anyone in opposition of the application to come forward and speak, please. All right, seeing none, I will close the floor to public comment and I'll ask for a motion from the commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve with the findings and conditions.
Second, Johnson.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, discussion? All right. I'm not hearing any discussion. All right, let's take roll call.
Commissioner Enstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Upstain.
Commissioner John Lane?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck. All right, Mr. Brown, let's go to double-digit number 10.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is an application for a conditional use permit to allow a public utility facility. And the, the public utility facility is the use that's identified in the Lincoln County zoning ordinance. And so, the subject property would be leased from the current landowners, would then have a footprint to construct and above-ground. And there, there will be some, some structures on the property, approximately 80 square feet to 319 square feet, various buildings on the property, but most of it's above-ground. And this is really just to facilitate, as you are aware, that the natural gas, Northern Natural Gas Line is being relocated through the county. This site would then be a site where, where the operation and the maintenance, regulation, and the oxidizing of natural gas would take place on the subject property. Staff has reviewed the application and staff does, opinion is that it does meet the standards and requirements of the Lincoln County zoning ordinance. So staff does recommend approval of this application, subject to the conditions of the staff report. However, I'll make one modification, and that is that number three, that the property shall be platted prior to building and approval. So staff does have interdepartmental meetings. We did have an interdepartmental meeting with staff from the city of Harrisburg. And this is within the city of Harrisburg plating jurisdiction, and so one of the things that they talked about was, you know, would be required to be platted. Subject property, as I mentioned earlier, will not be platted. It is just being leased from the current landowners, so there will be no transaction, no separation of the property. There will be a fence around the property, but there wouldn't be any transaction of it, so staff would recommend approval with the removal of that condition, number three, so that there would be seven recommended conditions for the application. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right, I have one question, Toby. So it is leased right now. If anytime in the future it will become purchased, then is this, we have to go through this again, or how would that work?
No, so if it does become purchased, my understanding it's a 50-year lease on it, but the applicant can talk more to that. But if it ever was platted, city of Harrisburg would have jurisdiction over to plating it, so this, this is really the use part of it, is the use appropriate for that property as opposed to plating or development of the property?
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions for staff? All right, hearing none, I would invite the applicant to come forward and talk more about the application.
Good evening, commissioners, thank you. I'm Brian Krueger, I'm with Northern Natural Gas Company, 16928 Karen Street in Omaha, Nebraska. Toby, thanks for that, that was helpful. Just a point of clarification on how Northern has acquired the property, though, it's through a facility easement. It wasn't actually through a lease, it's an easement that we purchased from the underlying property owner. Again, not in fee. And yeah, Toby explained it pretty well. We've got a few buildings here, we've got a pretty big project coming through the county where, where we are replacing our old A-line. Replacing capacity, putting in a new pipeline, and because of that, yeah, we were looking for this facility easement here. We'll have a, an inspection to a launcher on the site as well. A couple of buildings, like you mentioned, it'll be rocked and fenced with a security fence, and yeah, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? All right, hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what's next? Oh, anybody in favor of the applicant? All right, does anybody here like to speak in opposition to the application? Okay. Hearing none, I will close the floor to public comment and I will ask for a motion from Planning Commission.
This is Hogan. I will make a motion to approve with the findings and, and conditions minus number three condition.
Thank you.
I'll second Enstead.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the Planning Commission? Okay, hearing done, I'll ask for roll call, please.
Commissioner Enstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Upstain.
Commissioner John Lane?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much and good luck. All right, Mr. Brown, let's try number 11.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is an application for a conditional use permit to allow an agriculture-related operation. Specifically, manure digesting for renewable natural gas. Subject property is located just to the west and in between the Dakota Plains Dairy Operation, which will be utilizing the facility, which will be, I think, two, two of three facilities that will be utilizing the facility. And so, the application includes a concept plan or a site plan which shows the operation. And again, this is an onsite facility that would allow dairy manure gas to be converted, produced into renewable natural gas, and then would be shipped down the road. Staff has reviewed the application and does, has determined that it is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. And again, I should've said, the applicant of this is East Dakota's Renewable Energy LLC. And so, staff does feel that the application is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. Staff does recommend approval of the application, subject to the findings and conditions that were outlined in the staff report. With that, we'd have to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Okay, hearing done, I will ask the applicant to come forward and describe, describe what you're looking to put out there.
Hello, commissioners. My name's Richard Cooper. My address is 414 South Main Street in Ann Arbor, Michigan. I'm here to talk to you about the request for the conditional use permit for the manure digester. And I think Toby did a good job of, of laying out what we're here for. Company I work for is DTE Energy, which is, was until some years ago Detroit Edison, I think is a more familiar name. And we own and operate, I guess actually I'll, can you guys flip to the second one? Yeah, that works. No, one more. Nobody wants to see our big building. My, my, the group within DT owns and operates 11 of renewable natural gas facilities. Seven of them are located at dairies and four at landfills. This would be our first project in South Dakota. Our dairy projects to date have all been built in Wisconsin. That's it. I guess I'd go to the next slide and just talk to you a little bit about what we call renewable natural gas. RNG is what we call pipeline-quality gas that's produced from organic waste, from the anaerobic digestion of waste. So that waste could be, in this case, manure from a dairy farm, it could be the garbage that's in a landfill. Some people have used wastewater, municipal wastewater treatment sludge. And all of those things, if put in an anaerobic digester, will produce something like methane gas, raw biogas. Our facility will take that raw biogas, clean it up, which is mainly remove CO2 and oxygen and perhaps some nitrogen, and then we'll compress it and send it in a pipeline to Northern Natural Gas. I'd flip to the next slide. We have a plan diagram, I think staff has reviewed a plan diagram of the site. But instead of doing a rendering or something, I thought I'd show you an actual picture of one of our actual operating facilities in Wisconsin. It's very similar in many ways. It's, this facility will have four digesters, and they're above-ground, continuously stirred digesters made of steel. The ones that we are planning to go to planes would be laid out in L-shaped pattern rather than the straight line shown there. And like the site in Wisconsin, we'll use specialized membranes to clean up the gas. I guess if you can go to the next slide, this will be just what the staff did, only not quite as nice. Our facility will be located in a seven-acre plot in the lower right-hand corner there between two dairies. It's an advantageous site to, to us because there are two large dairies within close proximity, so it's an efficient way to sort of treat the manure and, and produce the gas. And it certainly doesn't hurt that the Northern Natural Gas Pipeline is about eight miles to the east. I guess I'll flip one more slide and show you a plan diagram that we provided of the site. This is, engineering me, this drives me crazy, we turned this to the left, but the north is to the, to your left there, but it looked like a better layout for the facility. That, that's really all I've got. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very, very much, Ms. Cooper. Commissioners, any questions?
So the dairy manure is hauled in by tanker truck or something similar, or?
Most of the dairy manure will come from the two farms through underground pipelines, like sewers.
Okay.
We have the ability and to take up to about four trucks a day from the Dendol family who controls the two farms, they have, they have a heifer building off-site. And they, they have the capacity to bring in up to four trucks a day of manure.
And then what is the, so it's natural gas and then is there solids that come out of the digesters?
That's a great question. So we call it digestate, but the manure goes in and it's a slurry. And what comes out is also a slurry, but it's got far less organic material, right? Most of the organic material was digested by the bugs and became the methane. And so you, we'll send that right back to the, the lagoons that are shown on the map. So they'll still have manure lagoons as they do now. It'll be essentially the same volume. We do expect it to have a lower odor, it'll have a lot less organic contamination, and we don't make a promise about whether it's 1% less or 90%, but it's, it's certainly less odor.
And that is then spread with, through the pumping hoses that they currently use?
Oh, sorry. No, it's piped back to the two lagoons and then the farmer manages it as he does his manure today.
Okay, so it gets pumped to, from the dairy to the site and from the site back to the dairy?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any additional questions, commissioners?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. President.
When you say lower, when, when you say lower odor, what did you mean by that? Lower than what?
Lower than the, than the untreated manure.
Which is being handled now through the lagoon system, right?
Correct, and instead they'll, they'll, the lagoons will now handle our post-digester material, which is just manure that has been digested.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you, Gary. Are there any, and I, I'm just asking, I don't know.
No.
Are there any additional permits that have to be changed from allowing this through the current lagoons? I imagine there's a permitting process they have.
I'll look at my colleague and see if I get this wrong, but, so we have an air permit. And we have the conditional use permit, we have a couple of county permits, I think, to run the pipeline. Oh, and the KFO permit. Oh, that's right, yeah, I'm sorry. The DNR has to review, this South Dakota Department of Environmental Natural Resources has to review the digester design to ensure that it meets their code. And, and we just got that, I think, last week or two weeks ago. We can provide that to you if you'd like.
Thank you.
Does that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good, yes. All right, commissioners, any other questions of the applicant?
One more for me. The digesters, do they have to be vented to the outside?
No, almost just the opposite. It's, the bugs that digest the manure are anaerobics, so, which means they don't like oxygen, so we have to keep them sealed up tightly. So no, nowhere gets in and nothing comes out. There's a gas collection system inside of it, that's the only way it gets out.
And, meaning what?
Meaning we collect the dig, the gas that the digesting manure creates, and then we clean that up and that's what ends up in the pipeline.
Okay, I got you.
All right, just one more quick one.
Yeah, no, good.
Just 'cause I'm really curious.
Yeah.
So I, I live in the electric world and when someone produces solar, the utility, myself have to buy it back. Is that the same thing that's happening here? Does the gas, do they need to buy back what you're producing?
No, they don't. And this is, but we're seeing a lot of activity with these digesters because certain states, particularly Oregon and, well, particularly California, will pay a substantial premium for what they call renewable natural gas, which this product qualifies as. And so, this gas will go in a pipeline, it'll probably be used nearby, but contractually it's sold into California. And that's, that's, that's who wants this gas. It's not a utility that's required to buy it yet, although that, that may happen one day. A lot of local utilities, including ours, have state requirements to buy renewable electricity. And there may one day be requirements to buy renewable natural gas, but nothing like that's been put on the books anywhere to my knowledge.
Interesting, all right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, if there's no other questions, we'll keep moving and I'll ask anyone in favor of the application to come forward. Okay, seeing none, I will ask anyone in opposition of the application to come forward. Okay, seeing none. I will close the floor to public comment, and I will ask for a motion from the commission.
I would move to accept the conditional use permit with its findings and conditions.
Thank you, we have a motion?
Second, Ensted.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. All right, discussion, Planning Commission. All right. Hearing no discussion, I would just like to say, renewable and stuff like this, I think it's, I've been hearing about this, and it's kind of neat to see, and you're creating something from a byproduct of what's already happening, so. Thank you, and I'll call for roll call, please.
Commissioner Ensted.
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins. Commissioner John Lane.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and good luck. Promise, thank you. All right, Mr. Brown, let's roll number twelve.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is a conditional use permit to allow a telecommunications tower. Specifically, this application would be for property just to the, or west of the Hudson. I guess I say southwest of the town of Hudson. But essentially, a portion of the property would be purchased, my understanding, or leased, I'm sorry. A portion would be approximately here on this concept plan. And so, the proposal is to build a three-hundred-and-thirty-three-foot telecommunications tower on the subject property. This was the information that was submitted, or concept site plan that was submitted with the application. As you recall, in the staff report that we posted and sent out to you, that staff recommended this item to be deferred, subject to some additional information. Staff was able to receive that information, I believe on March twelfth. That's when we received the information. So, in saying that, staff has had a chance to review the additional information that was required of the application. If you're familiar with this, telecommunications tower have a pretty standard, or standardized requirements associated with the application. So, staff is actually determined now, with the additional information, that the application is in conformance with the zoning ordinance, specifically the standards for telecommunications tower. And staff is tonight going to recommend approval of the application, subject to the conditions and findings that I'm placing on the screen. Again, the original staff report said that staff would recommend a referral of this. These conditions, six conditions that are before you this evening, those are standard conditions that we've placed on previous telecommunications tower applications. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time. Otherwise, I know the applicant's available to answer any technical questions that you have with the application.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? All right, one quick one, Toby, is that, is that a farm site on, what is that, would be east of the proposed tower?
Yes, so the application proposes to place a tower in between those two, what I'll call farmsteads. And the requirement for a setback for a telecommunications tower of this size is six-hundred-and-sixty feet from residents. So, it does meet the minimum setback requirements. Both of those properties were noticed, and I assume one or both of them might be here tonight to talk about it. But again, it does, the minimum setback requirement would be six-hundred-and-sixty feet, and so the proposed tower does meet that setback requirement.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, Commissioner.
Toby, when you say that both of those sites were noted, do I assume you're saying they were given notice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, if there are no additional questions for staff, I'll invite the applicant to come forward and speak on the application.
Hello, I'm Jonah Snyder, address forty-three-hundred North Northview, Sioux Falls, South Dakota five-seven-one-zero-seven. I am speaking tonight on behalf of Vicor Teleconstruction. We're a consultant, we are overseeing the real estate portion of this tower construction site. I also represent the Ambank LLC, the landowner. Tillman Infrastructure will be the tower-owning company, and AT&amp;T will be the tenant on the tower. Essentially, this tower is part of a federal program through the FirstNet program. AT&amp;T has an agreement with the federal government to build out rural connectivity, and this is one of those sites that will, is specifically targeting first responders. So, it'll have priority access, cellular 4G communication with firefighters, EMTs, and people of that like. Secondary, it'll also just serve the public, anyone who has a cellphone in that area. The federal FirstNet program has fairly rigorous requirements in terms of their location and footprint of coverage that they are requiring. I believe it's ninety-nine percent plus of the country is supposed to be covered by this program. And this particular area is far distant from any other adjacent telecommunications sites. I believe it's six-point-three miles from the nearest tower. And so, it currently sits as a dead zone, and as part of this construction, it will be, experience greater connectivity. And so, that is essentially the proposal that we're making tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? All right, hearing none, thank you very much. All right, I would invite anyone to come forward that'd like to speak in favor of the application. Okay, seeing none. I would invite anyone that'd like to speak in opposition of the application. Fair enough. All right, is there anyone that speaks in opposition of the application? No opposition, okay. I will close the floor to public comment, and I'll ask for a motion from the Commissioners.
Would you approve, Pashby?
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second, Johnson.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I assume they'll both be with the conditions that Mr. Brown mentioned earlier?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, discussion. All right, hearing none. Just want to throw one word out there, and again, with my role, I know AT&amp;T has the state contract for first responders, and, you know, this is part of that program, so I feel it's a good program to help communication for some of those emergency services in the community. So, with that, we'll take roll call, please.
Commissioner Ensted.
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins.
Epstein.
Commissioner John Lane.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and good luck with your project. All right, number thirteen has been removed. So, let's go to number fourteen. Mr. Brown.
No new business, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, there's only thirteen?
You lost track.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know about you, but that was enough for me.
I was just getting warmed up, Commissioner Pashby, I'm just getting going. All right, public hearings, a piece of the paper says new business, and Mr. Brown's already said we have none, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on adjournments? Hearing none, can we have roll call?
Commissioner Ensted.
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan. Commissioner Hogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins.
Aye.
Commissioner John Lane.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.